First item is approval of the agenda, moved to approve second. Steve made discussion. None, council please vote. That is approved, which takes us to public hearings. Public hearing A is FY twenty four budget amendment number two will open public hearing. And did we receive any comment concerning here to speaking public hearing about the budget of an? Now we'll close public hearing, move to resolution number eighty three, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, resolution approved. This will be the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget amendment number two. I'll move to approve. Second, Steve and Sandy, in the discussion. Seeing none, council please vote. Now moves this to the inside agenda.
Move to approve. Second, Sandy and Melissa.
In their discussion, council please vote. Group that takes us into the public forum, which is time to set aside for comments from the public on topics of the city business other than those listed on the agenda that are actually being taken. We will start with Story County Community Foundation update.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, I appreciate the time. I was on the Ames City Council twenty years ago, so. Well, I appreciate your work you do and I'll be respectful of your time too. How many of you know about the Story County Community Foundation? Hey, few, well, I'm here just to kind of give you an update on it and. Tell you a little bit about it and hope that you will take advantage of us in a good way, can I say that? So, we do two things at Story County Community Foundation, we give out money in the form of grants, and that usually happens in November. And those are competitive grants, with the grants that we've given out so far. With the beta here has been, back in two thousand twenty, we came up to the Story County Fair Association Legal Aid Society. Back in twenty twenty one, the nice project you've got going on here, which is the Nevada Field House Project. Year after that, the Camelot Theater, the windows upstairs are a twenty five thousand dollar grant from us. The Nevada Public Library, that was a story. Walked on the trail, the bank trail, that's down by the community building. And then last year, we gave out the kids a first of breakfast supplement. So that money comes through the state, but it also comes from endowments that. People have gifted to us, so. Last year, last few years, we've given out about hundred fifty two thousand dollars each year to about eighteen different projects. So substantial amount of money, and this goes to organizations charitable organizations and city and government entities, so. Those are open for you. I see there's a grant writer on your board, so I would think that you'd have some grants coming our way here more these days. The other thing we do is we work with charitable funds. We have four endowments here that I can name right here in Nevada. The Community Historical Society's got an endowment with us, the Public Library has an endowment with us. The Nevada High School class of ninety six or nineteen sixty six started a. Legacy Scholarship Fund, they give out scholarships, and then the Nevada Field House, which is really, we're just kind of holding things, the pleasure's coming our way, so. Charitable funds, again, these are for five oh one C three organizations. Gives everybody the ability to donate and support things, and these are endowments, so. A little bit of the money is used each year, the rest is reinvested, and it is invested professionally. So that it grows, and then next year you can take out even more if the markets are right. So, those are the two things we do, grants and charitable funds. If you're an individual, you might think about a donor advised fund. Donor advised funds are a nice way you can give to charities, it gives some nice tax benefits from there. Had a nice surprise on the way in, talking with councilwoman Erin, and find out that she is. Right there at the start of the thing with the Iowa Economic Development, according back to two thousand five. When these community foundations got underway, got funded, so thank you for the work that you've done. Keeping up great, I'm gonna call it good, and I'm gonna ask if anybody has any questions.
I'll say thank you for the work that you're doing for partnering on the Field House Project.
Okay, so I just hope that we get a little interview and then we might here commute for some funds or some grant request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on in the public forum, is there anyone else who would speak in the public forum? Wait.
Good evening, council, thank you for giving me a few minutes just to address you regarding the innovative communities beta, that is going to be starting up here very soon. This is our twenty fifth season, and I am counting the pandemic year because, just count. We are starting our community band season with rehearsal on June fourth and our first concert on Tuesday. Sorry, our first concert is on June fourth, the rehearsals are Monday evening before that. And I do want to just publicly thank the City of Nevada and the City Council for the support that we continue to get from this great. City Council in terms of the use of the facility for storage, the great space out in front here. The use of some of the chairs that we are allowed to store throughout the summer, it is a fantastic. Resource to be able to just have those items right handy, store them without all the things we. Were doing at the beginning of our times such as rounding up folding chairs and looking them all over the city and doing things like that. Thank you for that, and I also wanted to let the City Council know that. On Wednesday, we will be hanging our community banner, we wanted to hold off until the big event was finished this weekend with Pizza Pie Losa. And we will be hanging our banner through the season, and then we'll remove it at the end of our season, which will be a community jazz band concert on the seventh Tuesday of July. And I guess that will open up any questions that the City Council might have about our community band.
All the work you've been into.
Thank you so much, and we invite you to come play as. And or participate, even if you just kind of stand in the background, check us out for a couple tunes and move on. We appreciate and really enjoy having the supportive community this way. And I'll share this with someone, this is a list of our concerts that, just for the council's information, would be the best person to get this to. Sure, no, man, we're best, yeah, I'll just give you a couple of them here.
Alright, thank you. Continuing on in public forum, name anyone else who does the councils. Seeing none, we will close public forum, we will business A, resolution number eighty four, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, resolution approved, directed final subdivision plan, both parts of states, first addition, city of Nevada, Florida County, Iowa. Moved to approve, second. No discussion council, please go. And approves, takes us to B, group payer request number thirty five, our waste heart facility improvements phase two from Williams Brothers Construction, the amount of forty five thousand, two hundred ninety three dollars and ninety three cents. Moved to approve, second, Sandy. No discussion, council please go. That is approved. Takes us to C, approved payer request number twenty four, our waste heart facility improvements phase three from Boomerang Corporation, the amount of two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Approved.
And?
Yes, Melissa. No discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to D, twenty twenty four street improvements project contractor construct, A, approved payer request number one, the amount of one hundred fifty four thousand, four hundred eighty nine dollars and thirty eight cents. Moved to approve. Second, Steve and Andy. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to B, approved change order number one, the amount of forty seven thousand, four hundred seventy nine dollars.
Move to approve.
Sandy, Melissa. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to C, change order number two, in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred thirty four dollars. Moved to approve. Sorry, Steve, Jason. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. Is approved, takes us to E, discussion appropriate call regarding CBD project, additional invoices received, our work through gutters and highway for the storm rain issues.
Approved.
I'll second, yeah, Melissa, Steve, discussion.
So what's the update here?
I believe this is just finishing up some of the issues that we have when we were fixing them.
This is just the last of the?
I don't know if it's the last, but it's.
Not the last? Still going, huh? What do you foresee that's upcoming, so?
Well, Andy, I might have you go over there just so people can think about.
We just go outside once, yeah, but haven't been put back, am I the last question on this? Yeah. How come we are treated differently than all my neighbors on this?
I don't know, I'll let staff answer. What the difference may be, or how others have handled, I'll sell.
Well. None of the other, I'm the. None of the other buildings there got broken out for the gutters and downstouts, right? Just me. The others were, and they consent agenda for checks.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, yeah, they, you didn't break them off. Uh, I mean, we're starting to take this so personally, from, from the beginning, I had them asked to be put on the agenda. So we got a motion, second discussion, vote on it, and the vote was. To hook up my line. Contracts wasn't be there ten days. We flood twice more than Ben floods. Ben asked me to put on the agenda, doesn't get brought on the agenda, that point executive action, you start the project, it was an administrative support. You had to vote on it, took action, so I flooded three times, feel like could have been executive action, fix it. Not only. Did the others not have to come before council, asked for it, plead your case. Tom Richards wasn't hooked up at the beginning. He got, and, and his was the biggest line item of the project, his was half of the project. Tom got half of the project given to him. Without asking for, without even showing up to a meeting. I'm an executive action. I begged for it. When Ben flooded, I took the camera over, scoped it, found the same problem out of mine. Ben sent his bill through, it did get pulled for separate consideration, but you guys paid me. I sent my bill through, and I got bounced, right Karen, he called me and said it was taken off, wasn't gonna hit. I, I didn't even get put on, for you guys to discuss. I had to get kind of upset and demand to be put on the next agenda, you remember the, the discussion, and you said Jordan told you to pull it? I don't know why, you paid my neighbor for the identical. Bill, bounced mine, didn't get put on, couldn't discuss it. Every time I've got a bill that goes through, I'm the only one, again. Half of the cost. Of what you guys feel, he probably shouldn't have paid anyway, it was a contract consideration. Half the cost of this project went to a building owner that wasn't hooked up to begin with, didn't ask for it, never came to a meeting. I'm the only one. Why?
Can't answer that, Andy, I don't, I think the first time that I aware of those.
Everything I'm saying is true, if, if anybody, Jordan, you ever drew anything on any of it?
So, if I remember right, the reason I had it bounced was because. You were told in one of our council meetings when Brian was here that you were supposed to bring everything to the council, the council would discuss and make appropriate action on everything.
Steve said you wanted itemized, nobody ever told me to have it total, I'm not your bank. You told me you wanted itemized, every bill I've given has been itemized, and I float bills through, I, I would just want it to be paid. And you look at my bills, I mean. If there's any idea that I might have. Unfairly benefited, benefited, I challenge anybody, flood their building for two years to make it unusable. Buy a bat, go buy a skid loader, pay employees, work in the mud in the dark, dig it out, put it back together. With no assurance that there's gonna be, because I couldn't get assurance upfront, anybody do it, say, get it itemized, send the bill, and I complete my case again. The bills I sent through, because I don't pay Nevada, I paid attention. I charged you less than I charged from the hardware store. I charged half on the equipment, or what it cost me to rent from Star Equipment. I'm, I'm willing to justify my itemized bills that I sent for this, I'm cheap. And. You've got my repair, and you got all my damages, and I'm still less than the hookup you gave Tom with no request. And I'm here with this item bounced separately, taken off consent agenda, so I can justify it, and the fun part of this is. This is contractors you guys hired, you guys specified Jamie, you picked him to do this job, this isn't even me, this, this isn't my bills, not my expense. This was Ryan contacted a gutter guy, he managed to get all three last year, the reason there's a wonderful part of it is because he didn't get to me in time. Because the last heavy, heavy rain, without the gutter system there, it sheeted down the side of my building, flooded my electrical. Burned it up, almost lost my building, knocked Sherry's Hair Studio out of service for a day. There's no reimbursement for me for messing around with it, there's no reimbursement for sharing the business. It's just. Mine was the last one to get done. It caused me more damage, and I'm the only one to get bounced for separate considerations, that I just consented agenda, well, we trust Andy. Sign it off, it's not even my contractor, you hired the guy.
Which bill are you, are you referring to that got bounced, the, the one that we just approved?
You haven't approved it yet, that we pulled this, all the rest just went through consent agendas, I mean, nobody remembers them because I got put in the chest.
Yep, the first time I've actually seen that bill, Andy.
No, the, the one that I'm talking about that you took out was me hammering my line.
Yes, I, I do remember that one.
Right, no, this one, I'm, but why is mine a separate consideration item? Because last year you just paid Jamie to do the other three gutter cents.
That was because of what was discussed in the council meeting, and the council wanted to see the, the itemized list that Steve requested.
This isn't my bill, you hired Jamie.
I, I think, Andy, I think, Andy, you're, you have been kind of the, the, the source of information, at least to the council, on a lot of this problem. So I, I appreciate you coming and explaining to us what's going on, and you know, I. I don't think there's anybody here that is trying to put you through the wringer for this, I apologize if, if that is been portrayed that way to you. You know, we are here to listen and try and make things right as much as we can, so, you know, let's. It's okay, we'll figure it out.
And what, what I'll say too is I under, I would be totally frustrated too going through, you've gone through with your buildings, and I didn't know about that recent. The electrical issue with it, with the gutters, so, I mean, a lot of this, I think, is new information to us. We certainly don't want to treat you any differently, I think part of the issue probably is what Jordan said, is it was a council decision, because we didn't know how to deal with it, and then he got consensus from council that they wanted to take care of it, and. And I think we can have a follow up conversation to make sure that it's streamlined going forward, especially knowing if there's consensus at the council, and looking at our attorney too, to make sure we follow things correctly, but. Yeah, I, I don't think anyone in council wants to treat your situation any different, any differently from everybody else.
So as a taxpayer, the frustration here is, is every bill I've sent through is separate consideration, and I justify it. What have we decided about where the fault lies on this? I mean, this, this isn't my fault. You haven't had a rep from OnRap here, right? They haven't come up and justified the bill, they, they gave you, whoa, you guys paid. And Brandon, right? Not through you on the bus, had a conversation with you. I spent a day with one of your sons mapping out. All of utilities in my building, asked you about it, you guys hadn't included the roof drains, right? Okay, you've kind of let me swing out here on all this, that was never volunteered from HR Green, and that was omitted in the scope, it was, it was part of. Ontrack's supposed to find them. But it was never part of the information given out to the contractors, so I. I kind of blame HR Green a little bit on this, next thing is I said. I know the reason Ontrack didn't hit was because my drain comes out deeper than their drain, right, and, and then voice. He said he told them twice they'll come back up, I think part of it's on Ontrack. And Jordan, at the beginning of this, you started the conversation by saying it was your understanding, that it was the building owner's responsibility to get hooked back up. And then on our first meeting with Matt Runkie. He said the reason they had trouble during the second half of the year was because they had no supervision, and Sean Cole was, was perfect through the first half, and then he's supervision. You were the building official on it, I mean, you guys have asked where the answers are, I'm, I'm telling you. Ontrack went with my problem, I didn't need it in line, you guys got a bid for sixty five thousand, and they, Ontrack knew. They had to stitch new lineups from beginning to end, I've been happy with spot look, except they knew I'm too deep, they knew they couldn't have got up, they knew it. HR Green knew, they didn't include it in the details given, so, and Ontrack has justified that. And, and Jordan, I, there was no supervision on it, but this isn't my fault, I'm the victim of it, and I get to justify every penny that I go back, so if there's more to the bill, I'm pretty happy sending it. I haven't sent any personal property management, I haven't done anything, and again, my bill's cheap, this is. Mind blowing, not my fault, nobody will take responsibility.
I, I think you understand, Andy, what, how it works and what's going on.
Yeah, I understand.
I appreciate what you're going through too, okay? Let's just continue to work together and see if we can put this thing to bed here, so.
We have the work.
When I asked you, when I asked you if it's all done, I just was looking for information, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot or anything, so, I mean, let's.
And one thing I was gonna ask from council is, would you like any further things to be put on the consent from Andy's issues, and then you can call him if you have more questions. That was gonna be one question I was gonna ask to you.
Sure. I think we should do whatever is consistent with that thing.
And, Andy, I would say too, feel free to call me or any council too, if, if there's the things that come up. Because I, I think.
I think that the vow over, it's over because I have done a lot of free work for you. And then I come to the council meetings and justify it.
Well, I, I wasn't aware of the frustration, and if I were, then I could have talked to staff and figured it out, so, I mean, I'm happy to. To talk with you on that, and you know that.
I'm done. Alright, thank you.
It's been a motion and second on the side, I'm, I believe, so that takes us to further discussion. Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to new business A, approved five day special class C retail alcohol license, auto wine LLC, DBA Lucky White Wine Slushies Sixth Street for downtown Palmer's Market. A is approved five day license for five thirty one to six four. Moved to approve. Second, Jason, Sandy. And no discussion, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to B, approved five day license for six fourteen to six eighteen, twenty twenty four. Second. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to B, approved amendment to master agreement with HR Brain Incorporated for municipal engineering services for nineteenth street trail construction based services not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Moved to approve. Second, Steve entering. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to C, approved T-moment Geo Tab for fleet management.
This is something we've been discussing for several months, a couple of years ago, we started working on this, and this is the, probably the third or fourth company we have. Done research on, this seems to be around the same cost as everything else, but it, uh, else, but it also provides a little bit more. The one thing that we wanted to focus on was the maintenance side for our vehicles, we have. A maintenance plan currently, but this allows us to actually track it through the app or program that is provided when you get these Geo Tabs. We plan on doing this for six months and seeing how we like it, if we like it, we would like to. Extend it to other fleet vehicles, but if we don't, we will end up just getting rid of it. Each, each Geo Tab is around twenty dollars a month, and we're going to be putting in on six vehicles to start out with.
How do the department that feel about this, do they see this as something that's benefits them, or are they nervous about Big Brother watching them?
I don't think they're necessarily nervous of Big Brother watching them, because they know they're not doing anything wrong. I think that they're willing to test out and see how, how it goes, and. And if they, let's see if they're struggling, I can, but, but, yeah, well, mainly the whole, the big reason why we're doing this is because of the maintenance side of things, we want to make sure that. Continue to take care of our vehicles and getting the longevity outcome that we, we'd like to get. And also fix some of the issues that we see happening with, like. Explorers are one, one of the things that we continue to have issues on. But, yeah, that, that's really the main reason on it, I think there was maybe one or two comments about the Big Brother thing, but. I reassure them that's not the reason why we're tracking it, each department has a lot of access to their Geo Tab information, and. Really, they're wanting to be paying attention to it, the maintenance side of things.
Is there any other risk to the city by adding these on the city vehicles, does it open us up to any liability that?
Not that I can think of, I mean, I think.
Not that I can think of. I mean, I think you'd be immune from any kind of thing.
Okay.
Um, I think one thing with, with rollout, obviously, anytime you've got, uh, city resources that your staff is using, you just remind them that there's no expectation of privacy. Um, but they should know that, that, just reiterate that, that rollout.
Yeah.
So the thirteen eighty-six is for a full year. And you said we may.
So it is a month, it is a month to month.
Because, well, it seems to have off at any time.
At any time, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. And these were, these are something that our staff can just plug in. It's the same type of device that an insurance company would utilize.
Always in here will be.
Yeah. Would you approve, Roger?
I'll say nothing.
Jason, Sandy, any, any further discussion? Same no further discussion, council please go. That is approved. Takes us to report, starting with city administration.
All right, we had a wonderful business breakfast with N A B C. There's a really good turnout this, this last year. All three years that I've been a part of. Part of them, they have been good turnouts, but I feel like this one had a little bit larger than previous years. Code Guards Committee continues to meet, and they're definitely making some, um. Progress on what they want, want to do. Uh, one of the things that they're tasked with is creating a map of available buildings that would potentially allow murals on. Uh, some of the other things that they've been tasked with are, uh, crosswalk, paint, uh, painting or vinyls to put down. Continue to have I M U meetings, which is Iowa Association for Municipal Utilities. Several wastewater meetings. We had tour, tours this last week. Uh, with I J A C, they visited the field house, new wastewater facility, and, um. What was the, there, pardon me? Fieldhouse, wastewater, and streets. And so they had a lot of questions. I think they had a really good time. Learned quite a bit of what, what they have been doing, uh, what our city does, or our staff, and, uh, so I think it was a good turnout. Air permits, we've been going back and forth with the D N Rs pertaining to the air permits. We finally have everything kind of under wrapped and, uh, up to date. On there, we had changed one of our, uh, requests because we kind of put everything under one permit, and. We needed to separate both of them into two different permits, so we have that taken care of. Foundation meeting. Uh, if you weren't around this weekend, we did have Pizza Pie Lusa. We had more people this year than, well, yeah. Uh, more people here this year than we did in the previous years. Uh, so I, I think it was a successful weekend for the foundation and Pizza Pie Lusa committee. And then Sandy and I met earlier today to discuss council planning, and. We were wondering if July eighth, which is a council meeting day. Four to six P M would work to meet for the, the two hours. Uh, before council, and we would kind of just go over everything. We. Plan on doing a fast recap over the twenty forty, also bring in N A B C, Main Street. Uh, the school as well, and talk about some things that they have done, and really provide an overview of the twenty forty plan.
And what I've given your holds, what's left?
Doing this at time?
I do.
Yeah. Be the professional.
Snap, snap.
That is all I have. Let's see if questions about.
How many, how much more, um, people did we get in town over, over last year, Pizza Pie Lusa?
Uh, you know, for the tickets themselves, we had around three hundred, three hundred and fifty more. Than a lot in the previous year.
Okay.
And then I know, um, Jason could probably speak on this a little bit better, but the food trucks did better this year than they had the previous two years as well.
I was gonna say in total, probably a thousand. This downtown was a lot busier all day.
Yeah. It was generally pretty much for, for two or five hours.
You don't understand exactly that is for that three hundred increase earlier.
Right, I'm supposed to say? You know? Are, are you talking?
Like, people coming to the concert?
We'll, we'll be able to.
That, we had three hundred more people at the concert. This. Alright, is that what you're asking?
The number, the percentage number from last year to this year, like the increase. Like, what percent is that?
Uh.
Like, how many numbers?
Since the C G B did a grant, we can give you the info, but like, probably we can't really stick it in though.
Hopefully.
It was good, though. It's hard to estimate. I mean, the radio folks were asking us how many people were downtown total all day, and three, some, three plus thousand probably. People, like, kind of a guess, but if you think about who was at the concert, plus. It's, I think that's probably low. Is there a lot of people that came and didn't go to the concert?
Sorry, three thousand.
Anything else for Jordan? Okay, so moving on from my report, I was gonna bring up Pizza Pie Lusa. It's pretty neat to sit there and think it was about four years ago. We asked, why not Nevada, and to see what we've built and the whole community come together. From our business community to the volunteers, service clubs, and all across the community, and just everybody that came out, it was really rewarding. Bringing to just look around, just the joy on the kids' faces all day, and the adults at the concert just having a lot, so. It's become a really, to me, nice thing. Showcases our community really well, and our Main Street really well, and. A lot of new people, so, I mean, the heat map of tickets is pretty neat, of where they're all coming from, because they're coming from all over the place. And otherwise, um. Then, this week I'll be going over to Cedar Rapids to the Economic Development Conference. Uh, Deputy Durham's monitoring a panel with myself and the mayors of Des Moines and Cedar Rapids to talk about community economic development, so. It kind of.
They were a big help.
Yeah, yeah, big cities, so, yeah. Otherwise, any questions for me? Okay, council reports.
Uh, I'll report the, our esports team today, managed to take thirty flips, state finals.
Awesome.
Uh, uh, three feet, unfortunately, but we'll take thirty. That's good.
And you can have a day's planning going well?
Yeah.
So there are, now that P P L's done, that, um, and nowadays we'll start sending out sponsorship stuff, and. You'll see them right above. They always wait for Pizza Pie Lusa to get out of the way before they start to mount there.
I would just comment, I'm sure Aaron's been talking about the planning that the library's been doing, but yeah, great session on Saturday, and I'm happy to have been involved with that for like the last year and a half. Yep, been working on a very strategic plan for the library.
What's that?
Part of the control. Uh, just our routine maintenance operations, monitoring and planning, so. We did have some higher volume results this month, and, uh, we did a bunch of testing. We did. Well, as long as the last sample comes in, we will be within our operating limits. Uh, we had a number two research digest of burnout that we had to pull out and replace. It's pretty much it, and yes. You've been doing some. Yeah, we, maybe, maybe somebody did some new treatment points for them, huh?
Good evening, council. Um, as Sandy mentioned, we had what I believe is probably gonna be our last strategic plan committee meeting. On Saturday morning, and it was great, and then I spent the afternoon at Pizza Pie Lusa for the first time, and that was awesome, so. It was a lot of fun and got to see tons of people there. Uh. And then, let's see, April was National Library Month, and we did, or National Library Week was in April, and we, I had recorded about all the things we were doing. And it really, um, was interesting when I did our stats at the end of the month, because. Uh, our average amount of people most months is like thirty-eight hundred, and that gets a big boost during the summers. Uh, and our April door count, uh, for people at the library was forty-eight thirty, so. We really had an awesome month of lots of people at the library for different things. Um, and I'll keep that week of library, we had to get exactly what the total was, but it was huge, so. Um, it was kind of nice to kind of see how impactful it was. Uh. And now we are gearing up for summer. We have officially, um, met our fundraising goal of five thousand dollars for sponsorships with local businesses. And so we've got, um, all of our prizes kind of. Rolling in for kids. Um, our summer reading program will run from June. It's June second, the first Sunday of the farmers market, we are gonna have a kickoff in Patton Park, which is next to the library, and, um. It will run through the end of July, so eight weeks, and then we'll have a finale event. Um, with a phone party outside of the library in August for kids, and so. Kids and teens can sign up, win lots of cool prizes just for attending library programs, checking out books, and reading during the summer. Any questions from anything? Thank you.
From Marla's. Karen?
You have, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
I don't have anything else to share, question. I don't have anything else to do, any questions?
Thank you, Bernie.
So that would conclude your reports, which takes us to close session, pursuant to authority found in Iowa Code seven twenty-one point five one C to discuss strategy. Put counsel on matters that are presently in litigation or litigations imminent, where disclosure would likely be. Would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the traditional governmental body in litigation.
You want to go first, or?
Second, Sandy. Council please go. And we'll just close session. We're asked both to slide out, meanwhile, we're in a closed session.